I would like to call to order this meeting of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange. We will begin with an invocation to be offered by Dr. Adam Roberts, La Grange College chaplain, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Let us pray. Almighty God, you rule all the peoples of the earth. We ask that you would inspire the minds of all women and men to whom you have committed the responsibility of government and leadership in this community and in the communities and nations of the world. Give to them your vision of truth and justice, that by their counsel all people may work and live well together. Give to the people of our country a zeal for justice, that we may use our liberty, our freedom in accordance with your gracious will. Forgive our shortcomings as a nation. Purify our hearts to see love and truth. We pray these things through Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. We have a flag behind if you will turn and face. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for your prayer, Adam. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate, I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting and appreciate you working with us as we continue to fight and do our part in the battle against COVID-19. Appreciate everybody helping us to maintain social distancing, following the best practices by using the masks, the hand sanitizer, allowing us to check your temperature upon entry. And I appreciate the members of the La Grange Fire Department who have been helping us through this process. I would make a note that one of our council members is not feeling well, so he is at home and participating by video conference. So we have, which is permissible for a council member to participate by video conference so long as we have a quorum physically present, which we do. So I'm glad to have Councilman Mitchell participating by FaceTime. Mark, good to see you. And welcome all the other council members who are here. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on July 14th. I would entertain a motion.
It would approve.
Have a motion a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. And that passes unanimously. I'm delighted tonight to be able to recognize one of our own. Very excited to be able to recognize Billy East, who has been a dedicated employee of the city of La Grange, member of our staff for 25 years now. I'd like to ask Billy and Kathy if y'all would come forward and join me out front here. If y'all would like to come down here in the center so that the council can see you and also we can get good photographs. So for the benefit of the council but also our audience, let me tell you a little bit about Billy East. Billy began his career with the city of La Grange as a patrolman in the La Grange Police Department in October of 1966, where he worked until 1968, when he resigned to become a deputy with the Troup County Sheriff's Department. He returned to the city on October 7th, 1996, as collections agent and was quickly promoted to collections manager, as the city made the decision to bring its collections effort in-house. He and his staff quickly validated this decision by aggressively pursuing delinquent accounts, looking for win-win solutions, and becoming experts in the field. John Bell, late city clerk, noted on one of Billy's early performance reviews that, quote, "La Grange's reputation is well-known in the bankruptcy court in Noonan, and lawyers are taking notice," close quote. As Billy continued to show his value to the finance department, he was tasked with managing the city's loan and rent programs, where his staff collected over $200,000 in the first year and brought all accounts current or placed on a payment arrangement. A citizen wrote to the city manager around that time, quote, "I suppose it is rare that someone in charge of collecting past due accounts receives an accolade from the debtor. Actually, Billy may deserve a Purple Heart. Without fail, Billy represented the city in a very professional manner," close quote. In 2000, Billy's supervisory role was expanded to include courts and probation, where he was instrumental in gearing up the new probation office and catching up a huge backlog in court clerk's office. Throughout his many years in collection, Billy also provided support to utilities, where he was often asked to assist with a particularly difficult customer. On many occasions, the customer left smiling after Billy diffused the situation and negotiated a mutually agreeable solution. Billy and his staff have added literally millions of dollars to the city's bottom line, and we are very fortunate to have him as part of our management team. Will you please join me in thanking Billy for his 25 years of dedicated service to the city? Kathy, I'd let you do the honors of pinning the 25-year service pin. And I'll... Wherever you like it. And while you're doing that, I'd like to call Patrick Bowie forward. I think as the supervisor, Patrick, if you had anything you'd like to add to what I have read?
Just real briefly, I'll just say Billy's a really humble guy. He'll always say it's teamwork. He always does commence his staff's work if they do. But he's been a great team leader in his role and really added to the professionalism of the vision in that place. But we really appreciate that.
Yeah, we certainly do. Billy, anything you'd like to say addressing the council?
I hear y'all talking about the right guy.
Oh, we got him confused.
I appreciate y'all for putting up with me for 25 years and it's been a pleasure to work with the staff, counting numbers and layers. He's a man that made you have him for quite a few years and still hasn't been out. I enjoy my work and I appreciate everything I was supposed to offer management today.
Thank you. Any council members have anything? Dr. Edmondson?
I would. I would like to say thanks, Billy, for all that you do. I've never called Billy and it's never been one time that he didn't try his best to do what he could to help. When I had some constituents that would call me that needed some help, I'd call Billy, and if it was any way possible, Billy was going to do what he could to help. So I just thank you for that. Thank you for the citizens of La Grange, because we appreciate you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Well, I'll agree, yeah. It's hard for me to know if someone's trying to speak or not behind the mask, so you're gonna have to give me your hand. So, Councilman McCain.
I'd like to add on to what Dr. Edmondson said. And you, as I was coming in the door, we were talking about you, and I mentioned that you are part of that glue that makes the city really feel like family. And we thank you for your civil anniversary and your service.
Thank you. I can't help but recognize that we have longtime council member Bobby Trailer in the audience. Councilman Trailer, anything you'd like to say about Billy? I'd love to give you the floor.
In 96, Billy was young, old, and British guy. And y'all was willing to hire another person and not even go first. Then I went to y'all and I said, "You got to hire Billy and come out and make a couple." He said, "Well, I'm leaning forward. I'm just a person." And I said, "I'll say, 'Well, I think you think you're wrong.'" Well, he did. He made the hire of Billy in about four, five months later. Y'all approached me and he said, "I want to say thank you." I said, "For what?" He said, "Billy is the best partner I've ever made." That's it. John Bell, which means a lot.
Yep. Quite a testimony. Thank you, Councilman Trailer, and great to see you. Well, y'all join me again in thanking Billy for his service to the city. Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight, however, we do have several delegations. We have our interns, Winton Hurd, Chloe Harrell, and Jordan Parati. Ms. Van Shure, are you gonna present them?
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. I am very honored to introduce you to our summer interns. It was a little different with COVID this summer. Winton Hurd, Jordan Parati, and Chloe Harrell. Winton Hurd is a recent Auburn University graduate. Jordan Parati is a rising La Grange High School senior, and Chloe Harrell is a rising La Grange Academy junior. Jordan and Chloe, they both contacted our department about an internship, and they had expressed an interest in our animal shelter. Their internship was to work with the animal shelter by taking pictures of the adoptable animals, both dogs and cats, and assist in uploading the pictures in their system, in the animal shelter system, as well as social media, and to allow more people to see the adoptable animals that we have available. According to La Grange Animal Services Supervisor Chris Bussi, and I do want to give a shout out to them, they were fantastic to work with, every single person there. But he said Chloe and Jordan were a huge help this summer in the shelter. We've had several compliments on the pictures that they took. They took more than 50 pictures. They took several hundred pictures, but the 50 pictures that they uploaded of the 50 animals, only four to five dogs are left to adopt. And they also took pictures of the adoptable cats and kittens and even helped to clean out the cat room. We plan to use these pictures throughout the year on our Facebook page and to advertise for adoption events. So it might sound like a little bit, but it was a lot, and they helped out a lot. And we're gonna show you just a couple of the pictures. If the guys could help me out, these are some of the pictures they took. They really captured, I know I kinda told them how awesome they were all the time, but it really does help to see a sweet animal like this. You can keep going through. We have about five pictures that they took. This is just a few of them. And they did a great job, and it really does a lot to help adopt animals. Okay, so if we're looking through the rest of the pictures, I'm gonna ask Jordan to come up, and she's gonna say in her own words what she learned this summer.
My name is Jordan Parati. I am a rising senior at La Grange High School, and this summer I had the opportunity to intern at the animal shelter. Each week, Chloe and I would take photos of the animals and post them on the website in hopes of granting these animals a forever home. Through this experience, I learned that it takes dedication, hard work, patience to fulfill the needs of these precious animals. These skills will benefit me in the future as I encounter various obstacles in my career. I would like to thank Ms. Van Shure and the city council for giving me the chance to work with the staff of the animal shelter to play a small but important role in giving these homeless pets of La Grange a better life.
And Jordan does have an aspiration to be a veterinarian. Chloe?
Hi, my name is Chloe Harrell. I'm a rising junior at La Grange Academy, and Jordan Parati and I served as interns for Katie Van Shure. Katie was really fun to work with, and she helped us help at the animal shelter, taking pictures of the animals and helping them find a forever home. It really opened my eyes to see how many cats and dogs didn't have a home and how many they brought in each day or week. I was really lucky to help them find their forever home, play with them, and just see the inside of the animal shelter. One day, we had to clean out the cat room, and that was a nasty experience, but it was a good lesson. And I hope that maybe I can help the animal shelter again and even intern with Katie once more.
And also Chloe has already raised, she's been a part, is it the TNT Club at La Grange Academy, and they've had lots of donations to give to the animal shelter, so they've both done a really good job in their own right, and they're very interested in the animal shelter. Okay, thank you Chloe and Jordan. Winton Hurd, he was also our summer intern. We were very honored to have him with us this summer. He contacted us wanting to learn more about TV broadcasting and LGTV. His job was to shadow Alton West on our weekly show, City Week, and also host City Scenes. This last City Scenes that we're about to show you, he helped to write, produce, and anchor, and he worked very closely with Adam and Philip. And I do want to let you know, he was an incredible addition, and he brought us our highest ratings yet to City Scenes. Okay, we're gonna show you City Scenes.
Welcome back to City Scenes. I'm your host, Winston Hurd, here to discuss all the upcoming events happening in Troup County for July 27th through August 2nd. So let's get started. On Monday, July 27th, the La Grange Police Department will be taking applications for the 2020 criminal record restrictions process. There won't be an actual event held this year due to COVID-19, but the La Grange Police Department will continue to accept applications. Applications should include a reliable phone number and email address. Once completed, all applications should be emailed to Susan Whitley at switley@lagrangega.org, or you can mail your application to 100 Harrelson Street, zip code 30240. On Tuesday, July 28th, a foster care information session will be held at Western Heights Baptist Church Youth Building located at 2382 West Point Road. Admission is free, and the event will start at 6:00 PM and will end at 8:00 PM. For more information, you can visit the website at www.fostertroup.com, or you can contact Shannon Lovett at 404-329-6664. Also taking place on July 28th, the La Grange Troup County Humane Society will be hosting new volunteer orientation beginning at 11:30 AM and ending at 12:30 PM. The La Grange Troup County Humane Society is located at 1390 Orchard Hill Road. All volunteers must be 18 years old or accompanied by a parent or guardian. On Thursday, July 30th, beginning at 10:30 AM, there will be a ribbon cutting ceremony and grand opening of the Troup County Fire Administration Building and Emergency Operations Center. The Troup County Fire Administration Building is located at 2495 Hamilton Road. For more information, you can contact Rachel Kemp at 706-298-9845. On Sunday, August 2nd, the Iron P Homestead Exotic Petting Zoo will be hosting a meet-and-greet grand opening. This event will be located in Hogansville, Georgia, and will begin at 1:00 PM and end at 4:00 PM. If you have a strong love for exotic animals, I highly encourage you all to attend. Also, don't forget, the La Grange Police Department Citizen Police Academy is still open for applications. The academy is scheduled to start on Tuesday, September 8th, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. The duration of the academy will be 10 weeks, with graduation being held on Tuesday, November 10th. All applications must be completed and received by the LPD no later than August 31st. The class will close at 25 applicants, so don't miss out. Well, guys, that does it for this week's edition of City Scenes. Sadly, this will be my final broadcast with LGTV as the host for City Scenes, but I would love to take this opportunity to express my most sincere gratitude to the entire staff here at LGTV and all of those who have shown me endless support on this journey as an intern. For one last time, I'm Winston Hurd, and I'll see you guys soon.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank Katie, Adam, and Philip for just taking me in and reaching out to me. It's been a wonderful experience. To be honest with you, this internship has been the best thing that's happened to me in the last six weeks, just coming in every Wednesday morning, eager to learn, ready to work. And Ms. Katie makes the environment very friendly. She's always has a big smile on her face. She's a very warm individual, and they've really just been very patient with me. You know, the first time I got in front of a camera, I just felt like I had a real passion for it, fell in love with it. And she basically asked me, "What did I want out of the internship?" And I basically was a sponge the entire time. I learned a lot just from shadowing Alton and seeing what he does on a daily basis on City Week. And basically, the only thing I tried to do was take what I learned from there and apply it to City Scenes, and it just felt very natural. You know, every single week I got more comfortable with it, writing, producing my own shows, and I just really enjoyed it. I really fell in love with it, and when you enjoy doing something, it goes by so fast. And you know, even though it was a quick six weeks, I can't thank you guys enough for just showing me the things that go on behind the scenes, the editing, the producing, and just really making me feel at home and feeling a part of the staff. And hopefully it'll be other opportunities for me to work with the city and stay at home and continue my career in broadcasting. I just want to again, thank you guys for the opportunity. I really do appreciate it. I loved it. And yeah.
And Winton's parents, Randall Hurd is his father. He's a former firefighter in Valerie, and we're very proud of all three of our interns. And thank you, mayor and council, and Meg, and everybody who lets us do this for, we're able to be able to work with some really great talent, and our future is very bright.
Well, thank you, Katie, and thank you for leading the program, but most especially, thank you to our interns. We really do appreciate Winton, Chloe, Jordan. We appreciate all that you have done to support the city through the summer, and we know that there will be many opportunities for you to be of service to your community in the future. And will you please join me in thanking these interns for all that they've done this summer? We also tonight, under delegations, have Connie Hensler, the newly installed, recently installed, I should say, president of the La Grange Troup County Chamber of Commerce, and the chamber board chairman, George Bailey. Glad to have you with us this evening.
Well, good evening, George, to the honorable mayor, and certainly our constituents, the council here in La Grange. It's always good to be in La Grange, the county seat. I'm here tonight to introduce Ms. Connie Hensler. I know you probably already know she's going to all the municipalities since COVID-19. I haven't had a chance to really introduce her to everybody. Was in Hogansville last week, here in La Grange, be in West Point soon as they, if it's to come, in person, and to the county commissioners. But we hear Ms. Connie Hensler came in April and hired her in April. What a great choice we have gotten, even in the midst of COVID-19. One of my main goals and two, the reason we want to come to municipality, always, since I was a council member, I always wanted to have a coalition with the council, mayors, and elected officials. So that's one of my great parts of certainly being in the chamber. Also, this being the chamber, which is the Troup County Chamber seat, what we call Training and Commerce, we feel very proud. Have over 700 members in the Chamber of Commerce. We're yet doing a lot of ribbon cuttings, even in the midst of COVID-19. We're doing a lot still. And she's gonna tell you some more things, but I just want to present you with the Red Cross. She's a Georgia Tech graduate, and I was happy, even though she's Georgia Tech, I'm a Bullitt Off fan, but she's all right. I knew she was smart. I knew she was smart. But we're happy to present her, and she's gonna give you some more, what's going on with the chamber. So we thank you, Ms. Connie Hensler.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I want to also brag on George for a little bit. George is one of our best advocates for the city and the county. He's always talking about how great all three cities are, how great the county is, and he is especially out there promoting the chamber, so we really appreciate his leadership, especially during these strange times that we're in, as we're all trying to make our way through this. But I do want to especially thank you for your partnership as well, and one of the things I'd like to thank you for is the good relationship that we are able to maintain. And I know normally I'm up here with Red Cross and talking about that, and I've always appreciated working with the city council, and this is just another great opportunity to get to do that as well in a different way, so I'm really excited about it. It's been a great almost four months, and really we've been trying to be creative and to be able to still be that voice and resource and connector for our business community, just in a different way. We, I know that tourism is not part of the chamber umbrella anymore, but we have really worked closely with Visit La Grange and with Kathy Tilly, and we're excited about that partnership and the things that we can do going forward. So I think it's a win-win for all of us, and again, that's just something that we will continue to work with, and we are hosting the Welcome Center. We'll continue to do that until there's a visitor center built, so thank you for that partnership. We're very excited that in the midst of still doing things virtually and trying to be socially distant and wear masks, that you are allowing us to use Sweetland for our August Early Bird Breakfast. We've already had a great response to people signing up, so pray for no rain, but we do have a rain date, but thank you for that. That's exciting to be able to get out and do that. And then we typically have our state of community luncheons at our chamber upstairs, but because we want to be able to again, maintain a good social distance, we're gonna have that here at Delavant, so we're looking forward to that, and that's in August. And then another thing that we are working on, and we were very happy to be able to help with the mask distribution. We've been handing those out. It's still been a steady trickle of people coming into the chamber asking for masks and needing those masks, so we're still doing that as well. So that was great to work together with a lot of organizations in the city and Katie for that. We have been partnering with the Harris County Chamber of Commerce, and we will probably roll out this week, Together We Pledge, and that's kind of along the lines of Governor Kemp's safety promise and some other organizations you've probably seen, but that's a way of encouraging our business community to continue safe practices, to follow the guidelines that the CDC has set and that our governments are requesting of us. So we'll put that out, and we'll ask businesses to take that pledge, and then we'll be able to go online and see who's taken that pledge, and we'll have that information out. And I'll work with Katie on publicizing that as well. So those are a few of the things that we have coming up. If you ever have any questions for us or need anything from the chamber, just want to stop in and talk about what's going on, we would love to do that, and we welcome your input and look forward to working together and look forward to great things to come.
Thank you. Thank you, Connie, and we are delighted to have you in this position, and congratulations on this. Chairman Bailey, I think you did a good job in selecting Connie. Appreciate your leadership at the chamber. The chamber matters so much to all three of our cities and to our county. People don't realize sometimes how much the chamber is involved with and how many different organizations and entities you touch. And when someone comes to me, as often happens, someone comes to me and says, "Mayor, I'd like to get more involved in the community. What would you recommend that I do?" I always start by telling them to get involved in the chamber, because the Chamber of Commerce is, even in this COVID world, which is different, y'all are still a go-to resource for all of us in elected office, and so we value your partnership, value the 100 and, what are we up to, about 110-year history of the La Grange Troup County Chamber?
1911.
It's 110 years, so appreciate all that y'all continue to do as a former, as a member of the chamber, but also as a former board chair. I'm delighted to see the progress you're making and look forward to many partnership opportunities between the city and the chamber going forward. Any comments from the council? Or questions? Okay. Thank y'all very much for your presentation. Thank you. And it's always good to see George Bailey. I know that the entire time you've been here, you've been smiling. I know it. I don't have to ask you to remove the mask. I know you have been smiling the whole time you've been here, so it's always, and I'm smiling every time I see you, so it's good to see you.
One thing from the chamber, I think, for a mayor, his first life, president, going to be the president next year of GMA 2021, and we are so excited, and I'm praying next year everything will go smooth. I want all of Grange, we want to go wherever it is in Savannah and turn it out down there in Savannah, okay? I believe he's gonna be the next GMA president, and we feel 2021 is gonna be a great year, and this year gonna go on and go be good, but what an honor for him and the city of La Grange.
Thank you, George. I appreciate that, and I certainly share your prayer that we can get back to some sense of normalcy by summer of 2021. Listening to Dr. Gore this morning, I was sort of starting to lose hope, but maybe I will take your faith over Dr. Gore's lack of hope. How about that? Okay? Appreciate y'all. We also have, under delegations, we have Frederick Manley to address the council.
Thank you, guys. Again, congratulations, mayor, on your success and your position. And we've... Again, congratulations, Mayor, on your success and your position, and we've heard a lot of great things this evening, uh, in reference to the internship program and what the city is doing. Um, I'm here in reference to talk about, uh, criminal justice reform, and this is, uh, this will also be, some of the message on criminal justice reform will go to the chief, some of it will go to the school boards, and, and tonight, we're dealing with the city. Um, first of all, um, what we, my goal is to help the community reimagine what criminal justice should look like going into the next decade, and for us to open our mind and our eyes to, to look at, uh, things which can improve the community. Um, I'll first start with Erin. She has a few words she wanna say about the, uh, school to prison pipeline.
Good evening.
Erin Trivostova here. I'm a New York City educator, and I might also be kind of redoing education in Georgia, possibly. Anyway, uh, I'm very glad LaGrange found merit in my idea to utilize the churches to help with distance learning, but I want people here in LaGrange to take it a step further. Uh, I'm not sure when churches stopped being the sources of community care across the past few decades. During this pandemic, churches here in Georgia are uniquely suited to help schools do social distance, remote learning, and help break the cradle to prison pipeline. If I were a pastor and I had a kid with a single mom in my congregation, I know that she works hard, but she might not have the time to provide early educational intervention. And I know the research that comes from the Children's Reading Foundation says that kids who start kindergarten, three grade levels below reading level, never catch up, have a 2% chance of going to college, and are very likely to end up in prison. So if I had a kid in my congregation who was probably gonna end up on that pipeline, I couldn't live with myself knowing that kid could end up in prison until I helped provide early educational opportunities for that kid. At the church, I could do this by providing free childcare, using volunteers from my congregation, aimed at ensuring little children end up starting kindergarten on grade levels, by doing simple activities like reading and math games. They say that takes a village to raise a child. I encourage everyone in attendance to reach out to churches and remind them of this truth. Let's make churches the center of care, of community care that they once were. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, I will be speaking on, um, some of what I said earlier. LaGrange is a global, international city. Um, in spite of its imperfections, um, LaGrange has came a long way, but we still have work to do. The city of LaGrange roughly has over 50% people of color, and I'm sure some of those numbers are not even counted, but we're still yet to have representation in our police department as far as community policing is concerned. I've heard conversations about doing a global search, um, doing a global search in the state of Georgia. Uh, I just think we're missing a lot if, I think there's a lot of resources here, and I think that we need to put more emphasis in, in our local communities and really recruiting people that have a heart for the citizens. And I continue to talk with the chief about that. We've had conversation before, um, and he told me basically that he can't get Afro-Americans to apply. Um, we need to find out what that reason is. And to truly be a global city, meaning you're bustling with business activities, human capital, skills, knowledge, political engagement, cultural experience. We're not quite there on the cultural experience yet, in my opinion, but we're getting there. If the truth be told, there's a lot of income inequities that lead to crime that we must address, and we can start with an over-saturation of temp services in the community that's chopping away at people's salaries. Right now, we have today that Congress, uh, ended emergency payment for people, um, that, that, that's all they had in income. I think that's gonna be a devastating effect until Congress is able to come together, together with a solution. We did, um, an apology in reference to the story. Many of you know it, Austin Callaway. We did the apology, but we didn't do any policy. When you do their apology, you must do the policy to follow that. Too often, a lot of our African-American males are incarcerated, uh, for reasons, uh, which comes from poverty, drug use, and mental health issues. We have a hot number of people in the jails that have mental health issues that should be somewhere else. We have to address that. We can't continue to play footsie with these issues. And yes, I must get to the subject of gangs. We have complaints with, uh, how some people are being charged for gangs activity, and we want to look into that with the city. I contacted State Representative Bob Trammell yesterday to start this conversation with, uh, Jeff. I don't know if he called you yet, but he will if he hasn't, and we wanna start to look at, um, the laws in reference to gang charges, and we wanna make sure they're fair and equitable, 'cause at the end of the day, the police is only enforcing the law that's created on the books in most cases, but you have some abuse. Um, in reference to gangs, to many young people, it's a rite of passage. Going to jail, this can be a bragging right. New and better opportunities, promise of money to be in a game, music to the ears to young men and women, protection as well in their communities, dreams of feeling impoverished. Those are many of the issues. When we have citizens in the community that want to help, they may not dress like us, they may not talk like us, but if they've had that experience and they want to help with gangs, let's let them do that. We have a young man here today, Zo. I'm sure most of you know Zo. You know, we come from different experiences, but in order, if it's gonna help, we need to listen to every resource and every avenue of information that can help us along the We can do that with interagency groups, working with schools and even the rec department, yes. Many, uh, parents here say the activity, the level of activity that they had growing up, swimming lessons and other things, now just don't exist like it did back then, and the kids are restricted on activities. But we can create an inter, interagency groups with the schools and with the police department and, and look at these many issues. And we must deal with the issue of race that a lot of people don't like to touch. It's still here. Um, we can be more than the city of Mayberry. Some people wanna stay in Mayberry with Andy Griffith, some people wanna move forward and truly have an international city. There's trauma on all sides. What do I mean by trauma? There's trauma from, from African, African-Americans suffering and going through the history of oppression, but there's also trauma in the white community, having to see and hear the jokes at the kitchen table and that shape your identity that you try to fight. Some of us try to fight to this day. I don't wanna be that person. I wanna be fair. I wanna treat all people equal. That's the kind of city that we want to be. If we're truly gonna be an international city, we can't leave a certain segment of the city out in no way, shape, form. I have one other concern. Obviously, by the look at the attendance tonight, there was some people that were supposed to be here. Is Bishop here? Okay, you wanna come out, Bishop? There were some people that had some complaints, and I just happened, I was asked by a politician to go visit one of their meetings, and when I attended the meeting, there was some troubling things said, and there was some troubling things that I witnessed at the meeting, and I didn't go there for all of that. But, in the spirit of this situation, Bishop, is there anything you wanna say about your experience, uh, and what we can do?
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, it's no secret that we have been working for a long time trying to aid to the community. Uh, on one occasion recently, we had a meeting, uh, with the community. After the community meeting was, we was informed, my wife had come to me and told me that there was something going on with down, one of the neighbors down the street. We proceeded to go down and investigate, and then when we got there, the jump-out boys was there. When we got there, they had three men detained. We asked them what was the problem, and they said, this is exactly what come from the officer's mouth, was they were smoking marijuana. There's no way for them to tell that they were smoking marijuana from being on Young Mills Road, from where the apartment sits down behind the church and the salon, to see them that they were doing this. We went, I asked the officer then, "Why do you have him detained?" He put him in handc, he put the young man in handcuffs. And I told him, I said, "Well, why are you putting him in handcuffs? Is he under arrest?" He said, "No." Then they went on and then on and on. My thing is, if they've been riding through the neighborhood all day long, and they picking out individual, young men, that's standing in front of their own home, they wouldn't have guessed he was at his own home, and then they ride up on him and tell him, "Come out, we got to talk to you," because they say he was smoking marijuana. How can you smell marijuana driving by in a, a car up on Young Mills Road, the apartment sitting down in the back? Other words, I think that he, they was just picking. Earlier today, early in today, in the day, my wife was outdoors, and they rode by. First thing they said, "It's good to see you out today." We know what that was replying to. I've been protesting, she's been protesting with me, and they're riding through, making these sarcastic remarks. How much more do we have to take? That's my question to you all.
And just summing up that issue, they mentioned that they had three meetings, and at all three meetings, they had similar experiences. One meeting was near LaGrange College, they had an experience, and two other meetings, I guess, were at the church?
Yeah.
Okay. So, but everything he just described, I was there that day, and I witnessed the same thing. But, uh, we have to move forward and, and do better. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know, people say, "Well, why don't you go talk to the chief about that?" Well, I understand they had some meeting, something they were supposed to set up and talk about it, but in my view, if you're bold enough to do it in public, then I'm bold enough to come out and speak on it. That's my view on it. You have to be held accountable. You work for the citizens of LaGrange, Georgia. I've received so many phone calls, some threats, some intimidations to not even speak today. And, uh, it was, it was like, I don't, I don't understand it. It just made me more curious than anything. One last thing, as I close, as there's, the group is, is looking to talk with the DA about excessive charges, overcharges, because everybody's not in the game, we do know that some individuals are guilty, but some of these individuals have mental health issues, some of these individuals are copying what they see in videos, you know, so that's where I wanna get with Representative Bob and work with Jeff and, and the community to see what we can do in reference to these situations. Um, I will leave you with two questions. This is more so for you, Jeff. What laws are the city using right now to, uh, enforce the, uh, the gang charges that they put on people? Is this state, or is this something else? Because right now, our governor is even wanna take, I think, 13, 17-year-olds and possibly, uh, put, uh, a life sentence or the death penalty on them. This is a, a bill that's, uh, being looked at right now, and that's troubling. Uh, if you wanna look at the bill when you get a chance, it's HB 994. I don't know if you already have that information, Jeff. HB 994. Under this bill, children 13 and 17 years old would be required to be tried as adults for 33 new offenses, not to mention the ones that are already, that we're already dealing They would be classified as gang-related. I could go on and on, but in, for the respect of time, um, there's so much more with that, but if you could look into that bill, um, and, uh, Bob, me and Bob talked yesterday, and, uh, see what we, what we can do to improve things with the community with that. Because I did tell Bob, if you, if you are, if you are arguing this legislation at the Capitol, we need to be arguing this legislation on a local level to make sure that innocent people are not caught up. And, uh, also to mention, not only with the three meetings that they had, uh, we had one, maybe two members that received personal phone calls from, um, officers trying to find out what they're doing, what's going on. Uh, it's a diverse group, so I guess they figured they'll call the white guy, maybe he'll tell them something. But these, uh, people are afraid, they don't wanna talk about it, they don't wanna show up, like I am, to discuss it, and that's why I'm here about that. I ask you one question, Jeff, the other question, you don't have to have an answer now, but I wanna ask, is the city in any way currently, or in the last year or so, funding or subsidizing any part of the Assistant DA Gang Task Force? That's a question that many people would like to know. Do you have an answer to the first question in reference to the laws?
Those are state laws that you referred to concerning, uh, gang statutes and penalties. Those are state laws that you refer to concerning gang statutes and penalties, and I'll defer to the city manager as to what's in the budget for the DA's office.
There has been some funding for salary for the Assistant DA in the last couple of years' budgets.
I couldn't hear you clearly, I'm sorry to the mask.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, these masks are hard to hear. There has been some funding in the past couple of years for the Assistant DA's salary.
Okay. In many big cities across the country, as cities try to figure out how to reform their cities and do better, they're trying to separate the police department and the DA's decisions as, because it's a conflict of interest that's going on. And I hope that we can find a way to resolve and get rid of the conflict of interest that we have in reference to that, because that just leads to other unnecessary issues. Thank you, guys, for your time. I may be back later, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Manley, thank you for your presentation, and thank you to Aaron and to Bishop Adams for your comments as well. I would, I would like to offer a word of regret from Chief Decker. Chief Decker is not feeling well and was not able to be with us tonight. I know Lieutenant Strickland is here in his place, but I would, I would strongly encourage, encourage you to follow up with Chief Decker on these concerns and issues. I will certainly share them with him as well, both the specific concerns that you and Bishop Adams raised as it relates to the meetings and the encounters. I would encourage you to follow up on that. But then more generally, I appreciate your, your offer of help and your offer of assistance to try and help the police work more closely with the community. Chief Decker has established a Community Relations Task Force. They meet on a monthly basis, and I would encourage you to, to either join that group or attend those meetings. Chief Decker can provide all of those particular details, because a lot of these issues get discussed on a regular basis. And I'm with you when, when you say that more feedback is better, I mean, more, more conversation, more voices at the table. We need to hear all of those perspectives, and we need to do so in an open and honest way. So I appreciate you having this dialogue tonight, and I don't think it will end here tonight. I certainly think it will continue. One way that it can continue is, is to really plug into that Community Relations Task Force. And then I know that Dr. Edmondson has, has requested, and we will, at a future meeting, be planning to invite Chief Decker and the district attorney and others to come and dialogue, just have a conversation with the council about, about the, some of the concerns that you have raised. So they have not gone unheard, we are listening, and we will continue to have that conversation in the future.
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor.
We do not have any petitions tonight. Do any council members have anything they would like to report tonight?
Nor report.
I do have some I want to report. Hold on. Hey, hey, don't leave yet, don't leave yet, don't leave yet, don't leave yet. I know that a lot of you guys were here at the last meeting, and I felt like you guys had something to say, but you didn't say it. And I just want to let everybody know that this is not a city of intimidation. Everybody has a right to voice their opinion. As a councilman, I've worked too damn hard to allow people to express themselves. And I don't want the citizens for one second to think that you're being silenced, okay? I love each and every one of you. And there is no room in this city for intimidation, for the thought, or the, the, just, if you think that you're being intimidated, I want you to know there's no room for it. If you have something to say, say it. I'm here for you. I don't like to find out about things out there in the street. I mean, sometimes it comes the way it comes, but if you come to this meeting to say something to this council, say it. We're not boogeymen, we're not here to bite you, we're not here to beat you up. I am chastising you now because I thought we had an open-door policy. I thought this was an open city. I thought that we weren't intimidating. Maybe it's the fact that I'm 6'4", 300 pounds, I don't know. But I'm, I love each and every one of you, and I want you to feel comfortable with any problem that you have coming to this council and laying it down, because that's the only way we're going to resolve anything in this city, is we have to have open and honest dialogue. I'm not a big fan of having meetings behind closed doors. I'm not a big fan of that. Sometimes it is necessary. But if we hash it out right here, there'll be less drama out there. And so far as all the gang members and all this other stuff, stay off of Facebook, all y'all. The adults and the children, stay off of it. You ain't got to tell everybody what kind of gun you got, and you ain't got to tell everybody how you feeling today. Give it to yourself, take it to Jesus. That's all I got to say, I love you all. Now y'all can bow.
Well, thank you, Councilman Gaskin. Oh, oh, I've got Councilman Mitchell by FaceTime, yeah.
Yes. If you can call me toward the mayor, so that you can hear me. The Reverend that spoke just a minute ago in between the speaker, original speaker?
Yes, Bishop Adams.
His last name is?
Adams, Bishop Adams, Jesse Adams.
Okay. I just had one thing that stood out to me, because I've been paying close attention to, to the, to the Facebook Live forum that you did with the district attorney and the police chief and Bishop Adams prior. And I keep hearing this term, "jump-out boys," when the bishop is referring to the police. I'd just like to add, it might be a good start if we just start calling our police officers, police officers or detectives, instead of some derogatory slogan. That might be a good start.
All right, thank you, Councilman Mitchell.
Aye.
Any other council members have anything they'd like to report tonight? Okay, City Manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
Just one tonight, Mayor. We identified a technical issue this afternoon with the annexation and rezoning of that property here on Mill Road. So I need to ask you to table that vote, so that would be 12A and 12B, I need you to table. And we're also going to need to push up our council meeting on August 11th to August the 10th to coincide with fixing this little technical issue.
Motion to reschedule.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to reschedule our August 11th council meeting to August the 10th. So the regular council meeting will be at 5:30 on August the 10th in this room.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
With our work session, all that stuff?
Will we move the work session to the Monday as well?
I don't think so, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, so we'll move, we need to have the work session before the council meeting. So, yeah, we'll do the work session Monday. That's, that's the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of rescheduling the meeting, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kelsey.
Thank you, sir.
Any other report?
No, sir.
Okay. Under resolutions tonight, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for CARES funding. This is the, this is the funding in the CARES Act from the federal government that's being apportioned to our cities on a per capita basis to cover expenses associated with coronavirus.
Yes, our staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. We do not have any first readings of ordinances tonight. Under second readings of ordinances, we do have two ordinances that relate to the Cameron Mill Road property that Mrs. Kelsey discussed. The first is the annexation, and the second is the rezoning request. And due to the, the technical issue of timing, we would, we would like to entertain a motion to table the annexation and the rezoning ordinance to our August 10th regular meeting. Have a motion and a second to table those to August the 10th. Is there any discussion? And I'm looking to Lawyer Todd to see if that's the correct parliamentary...
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second to table items 12A and 12B to our August 10th meeting. If there's no more discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. And that passes unanimously. We will move on to second readings under 12C, rezoning property located at 610 Greenville Street.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used zone of real estate located at 610 Greenville Street and owned by Blackwell Realty and Land Holding Company to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a second reading, rezoning property located at 105 Cooley Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used zone of real estate located at 105 Cooley Road and owned by James and Connie Stoddard to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have an ordinance, rezoning property at 407 North Greenwood Street.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used zone of real estate located at 407 North Greenwood Street and owned by Park Hill Properties to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have an ordinance amending the square footage requirement within the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning ordinance of the city so as to modify the size of restaurant or eating establishment allowed within the C1 district, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have an ordinance amending the sign ordinance within the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the sign ordinance so as to clarify that building signs are allowed within the C1 district if visible from a publicly maintained multi-use trail, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have an ordinance amending the parking within the Central Business District.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend Article 3 of Chapter 10-20 in order to create short-term parking within the Central Business District, to authorize the city manager to determine and locate the number of said parking spaces, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have an ordinance amending the alcoholic beverages ordinance.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the alcoholic beverages ordinance in order to remove the barrier requirement from sidewalk cafe regulations, to modify the definition of premises to allow certain outside sales without a physical barrier, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have an ordinance prohibiting certain off-road vehicles from operating on public streets, sidewalks, and other areas.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend Article 1 of Chapter 10-20 in order to prohibit certain off-road vehicles from operating on public streets, sidewalks, or other areas, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have an ordinance adopting a tariff in support of the Seoul Energy Efficiency Program.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the City Utilities chapter of the code, to adopt a tariff in support of the Seoul Energy Efficiency Program, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. All right, well, I think that may be a record for the most number of ordinances we've, we've approved in one, in one sitting, because of all those zonings. Okay, we do not have any agency appointments tonight. Is there any other business that needs to come before the city council tonight? Ms. Tiara.
Hello, Mayor. Your name, hey, hey, all city members, all council members. I would like to address Mr. Frederick Manley and Aaron. Some of the things that he was talking about, about uniting the community and all of that, we do have racial trust feeling that we already put a little over 400 people through, and so you would have to get with Curtis Brown to get that information. Also, we do have free training at West Georgia Tech, the WIWA program, they pay for your gas, they pay for your childcare, and stuff like that. Also, with the kids, she made a reference to the kids that don't get third grade reading level. Well, I didn't know how to read until I was in the seventh grade with a teacher. So I have this last year, I came from nothing, and now I'm a HR manager, a male HR assistant. So it can be possible. And also with Kaya Met, they all have a enrichment program for the students. So we already talking with Career Academy, and also Scott Malone and Kelly Witch is working on that project with Lee Jones. So just because you don't see stuff going on don't mean it's not going on. So I encourage people to ask the questions instead of bringing it to you all, because we all, we as community activists are going before you all and making plans and trying to get everything done, where people don't ask question and making confusion to the people in the community. So I urge people to ask the questions to the right people and not keep coming up to you all, because at the end of the day, this stuff had already been done, and we in the process of doing it. And also with the Better Tomorrow Program, we are, we already working with Chief Decker, with the Better Tomorrow Program, with people with at-risk youths, and also people that have things on their background, they go through a SISWEE project or training with the police department, which West Georgia will give them the training for. And WIWA helped, agreed to pay for it. And also, Chief Decker already had hired last month three African males for police officers. So sometimes it just helps just to ask the question and not just come up here and say what we need, you know, because it just, it's better communication that way. So that's all I got to say.
Well, thank you, Tiara, and thank you for all that you do in the community, and I certainly always encourage people to work together to improve the community, and I think everybody wants the same thing. Everybody wants to see improvement, everybody wants to see a reduction in crime, everybody wants to see better relationships, and anything that anybody can do to facilitate that is something that I encourage, always encourage. Anything else that needs to come before the council? Ms. Lopez, good to see you.
I personally just want to come before the city council and thank you for your continual support for our refuge ministry. And also, I want to address, I know there's a lot going on in the world and everything, but it's one thing about LaGrange, LaGrange is a very special place, and we are very much ahead of the curve when it comes to a lot of social issues that are going on around the world. We don't have those kind of issues. We, of course, we do still have work to do, but people are trying to catch up to where we are. And I'm just so honored to be a citizen here in Tru County, period, and I would like to see the work that we are doing as leaders in the community to even be spread out more, you know, across this Tru County, and hopefully be a blueprint for a lot of cities. I've never lived in a city where I felt safer. I never lived in a city where I felt like my voice could be heard if I needed it to be heard. So I just want to speak on the positives sometimes. We always can find room for the complaints, and they are, some of them are legitimate, but somebody need to shine a light on the positives also. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lopez, and certainly you're absolutely right. We have plenty of issues as a community, but we also have a lot of good folks doing a lot of good work, and I count you in that category, and thank you for the work that you do at the ARC. Okay, Ms. Van Schor, would you like to offer something to close us with?
Well, our good news is that we have three, three brick interns for someone, and we appreciate that. Well, that was my good news for today.
Okay, well, it certainly was good news. Appreciate you all being with us tonight, we stand adjourned. Appreciate you all being with us tonight, we stand adjourned.